Council meeting to order, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, consider approval of agenda as presented, if we have any changes, additions, subtractions to the agenda.
No changes.
Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on November fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. Motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item three, consider on second and final reading ordinance twelve, ten, nineteen, annexation and zoning of Bennett Road Extension area sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, of course, this area consists of a little over thirteen hundred acres and two point one three square miles, it's west of the current corporate limits between Highway seventy and I forty, and this annexation was initiated due to the pending construction of Bennett Road, which would connect the proposed fifth interchange with Highway seventy. As we noted in our first reading, this area is entirely within urban growth boundary, and urban growth boundary is an area that we're allowed to annex within. Plan of services for this area, which was resolution twelve, ten, ten, was adopted at our last meeting. Zoning for this area would closely conform to the recommendations from the Cookeville twenty thirty plan. The proposed zoning that's before you tonight reflects the R D single-family and duplex residential zoning along Locust Grove Road that was approved by council at first reading, the area through here. The proposed annexation and establishment zoning been approved by the planning commission and recommended by the planning department. I have had received one comment since first reading, and that was from the Grimes, and it concerns some zoning on their property, and I'm sure they'll get up and speak about it, but we would recommend, of course, for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Anything? Anything from the audience?
Yes, sir. I'm sure you know me by now, Mark Grimes, but we just had some time to think about it, and of course, as our first opportunity with zoning, et cetera, but anyway, we wanted to see if we could make our proposal. If you look, I know not to touch the map, but if you look, basically, the last C L where it joins the RS twenty on Highway seventy, and basically, there's this little driveway there, Diagrams Road, so basically, top left of the map here.
North of seventy.
North of seventy?
That was on the south side.
South side.
Sorry, south, yeah.
I laid some on there.
Yeah. Gotcha.
This hillside base right here is part of this track. And what they're talking about is putting a park at fronts on West Wall Street, into local commercial. I lay back the same distance as the properties that are adjacent to you.
Yeah, just to be uniform.
This, in our long range plan, the twenty thirty plan, this entire corridor forms commercial for that which could block with the twenty thirty plan, that's something you should do. Is everybody clear on the property?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And just to let you know a bit about the property, how long has it been since it's been occupied? Roughly a decade, it's a long time. But it was a house my mother grew up in, but it's dilapidated, and we've actually had plans to demolish it, but it has asbestos, so we, it's very expensive, so we kind of waited. Plus, we know the seventy's going to be wide, and so we're kind of waiting to see how things progress. But it's unoccupied, there's not any service there, we pulled a mailbox on it, so, and it is next door to Heating and Cooling, Jackson, sorry, Jackson Heating and Cooling. So just to let you know a bit about the property, but we think, obviously, with the business next to worry, it would make sense for C L, so, anyway, thank you.
For the minutes, this would be a portion of parcel two oh seven on tax map thirty nine.
Could you explain that to me again, I'm sorry? I wasn't, I was having trouble following you at first.
Which part?
Well.
Where it is?
Yeah, where it is and what.
Sure.
Yeah.
The Grimes zone lists three, maybe four parcels in there in this area. The largest piece they have is this track.
Okay.
And this track, these lines, these symbols are hooks, that means it's all the same tax parcel, so they're not contiguous, for whatever reason, they're the same parcel, so this is two oh seven, and this is two oh seven.
Okay.
My daughter lives here, and then, Miss Grimes live here. So this front part here is on both of the sun, and then he, and this track. So what they're asking is that this portion of this big track, we'll just look at, and there's this hillside track, and then, back on that to the same distance, that section right there we see it.
Okay, okay.
Same size, it's basically, this mirrors that, that track right there, right on this side.
Okay, all right.
And again, that does comply with our twenty thirty plan.
Okay.
This will need a smart board.
You've created the board. That would be an ideal time for the smart board to work. That's what.
The zoning is a part of the annexation ordinance.
Right.
It's the map, the map for the proposed zoning is attached to the ordinance, and it's a part of the ordinance to adopt the annexation, and the map's been revised on what was changed on first reading.
Okay.
And if you agree to change this, then we would change it in the final version.
Councilmember Albright mentioned that, or mentioned to me, we should maybe make an amendment, Connie, that, to reflect that change?
Yes, I think you need to, yes.
Connie, why don't you go ahead and make that amendment, since you were.
A portion of parcel two oh seven, map thirty nine. A portion of parcel two oh seven, map thirty nine.
It's an amendment to change the zoning to local commercial for parcel.
A portion of parcel two oh seven, tax map thirty nine.
Part. Parcel two oh seven.
Map thirty nine.
Map thirty nine.
And you could word it to be even clearer, that to extend, to match the current southern boundary of commercial zoning for the adjacent properties.
I'll make that, I'll make motion to amend.
And I'll second.
Of what you just said.
We got it in the minutes, so it's, at least it's in there. We don't want to say it in case we mess it up. Okay, discussion, comments?
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment.
All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay.
That's on the amendment.
This is on the amendment, this is.
Yeah, you just passed.
We have to vote on the amendment, and then we have to vote on the motion as amended.
I'm ready to vote, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have anybody else?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I am Pat Dyer Grimes, and I don't like to speak in public, but my husband isn't feeling well tonight, so I'm in. And I realize this meeting is regarding annexation. However, I would request just a couple of minutes of your time, and Mrs. McLean, I respectfully request that you include in the official minutes what I'm saying. Our family has asked that a half of the portion of the proposed Bennett Road extension, which affects our five-generation farm, be moved onto the adjoining property east. This means there'd be eighty feet on us, eighty feet on them. And since our farm, as you can see by looking at the map, is long and narrow, this eighty feet is very important to us. Plus, if the move, proposed move, this would save our natural spring. And I understand that there has been a meeting, city officials have met with the landowners, so what my family and I are asking you all now is for your support in this proposed move. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes.
That is true, we have had discussions with the adjoining property owners and are pursuing a shift in the right of way.
Great.
Is that correct, Mr. Shipley?
That's correct.
All right, anyone else want to speak on the annexation? All right. This is to vote on the motion.
As amended.
Okay, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
All right, on to the consent agenda. Item four, set a date, January third, two thousand and thirteen, for a public hearing on ordinance twelve, twelve, twenty-two, amendments to the zoning code relative to assisted living residential care facilities as permitted uses in the P R D and C L districts. Item five, set a date, January third, two thousand and thirteen, for a public hearing on ordinance number twelve, twelve, twenty-three, amendments to the zoning code, section two oh five, parking requirements relative to modifying the minimum parking requirements for certain uses and inserting provisions for deferred parking. And item six, consider awarding bids for transformers, luminaries, and cable from the electric department. We have a motion for approval on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, just, actually, the consent agenda is fine, I'm not, I just wanted to make sure that folks understand, item five, the modifying the minimum parking requirements is really kind of a big deal. We, as long as I've lived here, I've, one of the things that I've noted, I've noted in, especially around the hospital area, which parking is at a premium, that the requirements for parking spaces for square footage has been, has been pretty tough to manage, especially when you've got tough, a small area, and doing this, I think, allows and takes into consideration technology and some of the things that that produces, which is decreases the number of people, so I think that's really, I think that's a good thing that's going to happen for Cookeville, and it's going to place less of a burden on a lot of our business owners that are trying to expand, so that's, a lot of folks probably don't know that because it's on the consent agenda, I just wanted to kind of highlight that for just a second, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Epps. Anything, anybody in public? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Item seven, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance twelve, eleven, twenty, amending the zoning code, section two thirty-one, S R A sinkhole retention area, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance revises section two thirty-one of the zoning code, which is our current sinkhole retention area requirements. In two thousand and nine, the Department of Earth Sciences from Tennessee Tech completed a sinkhole study for the city, and in this study identified floodplains and their elevations for two hundred and nineteen major sinkholes scattered throughout the city and the city's urban growth boundary, and those are depicted on the screen. The two thousand and nine study examined sinkhole floodplain areas in a greater detail of accuracy than we previously had available. In our Cookeville twenty thirty plan, and analyzing the study that was prepared by Tech, it was determined that nearly three-quarters of the land area within the city of Cookeville is actually drained through the sinkhole underground system. The plan further states that as available land, which is not susceptible to flooding, decreases will have increased pressures for development of properties within FEMA-identified floodplains and also within these sinkhole retention areas. With this in mind, one of the primary recommendations of the twenty thirty plan was the adoption of improved standards for development within sinkhole drainage basins to reduce the potential for future flooding damage and to protect our stormwater system. The S R A sinkhole retention area zoning district is an overlay district that may be located within the limits of any other zoning district. The boundaries of the S R A districts are depicted on our official zoning map already and are derived from the two thousand and nine sinkhole floodplain study. The revisions proposed in the ordinance consist of the following major components. First, we've added several sections dealing with findings of fact, statements of purpose and objectives, and pertinent definitions relative to sinkholes. It includes an exemption for certain types of development located within existing sinkholes. Residential structures would be allowed to expand up to fifty percent, and non-residential structures would be allowed to expand up to ten percent, at least for existing structures and within existing sinkhole floodplain areas. Development activity within a sinkhole floodplain or sinkhole retention area will be required to submit a sinkhole terrain survey. The survey has to be completed by a qualified professional, this includes a geologist or a geotechnical engineer. These surveys must identify karst geological features, including elevations and pre and post-development surface drainage volumes. Based on the studies completed by the geologists or the geotechnical engineer, they must identify a buffer around the major components of the sinkhole, primarily the actual throat or the area where, that is used for drainage. These buffer areas are based on the studies completed by the qualified professional, and within those areas, no development can occur. Those areas have to be protected and remain in a natural state. This includes, also includes new provisions that if you discover an unknown sinkhole, a previously unknown sinkhole in a new development, then these regulations kick in. Again, the study identified two hundred and nineteen major sinkholes. We have lots of minor sinkholes or unknown sinkholes out there in the city, and we want to make sure that if we find those in the future, that development will be protected. Now, the provisions for permitted uses, prohibited uses, uses permitted by special view, all say the same, that's not changed from the current regulations into the proposed regulations. In general, if you do construction within a sinkhole retention area, that has to be approved by the public works department and by the planning commission, and the developers are required to submit evidence that the structure they build will be floodproof or not, will also not affect the storage capacity of the sinkhole retention basin. The revised sinkhole provisions have been approved by the planning commission and are recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
I have a, Mr. Mayor, I have just a short comment. Mr. Mills, I really appreciate the planning commission and, and Councilman Woodford, I appreciate your work on this, is one of the things, one of the first items that happened when we, when, as this council, city council, that happened, when we, when we chose to, when we sat here in these seats, as we had a couple of those hundred-year floods that happened, and, 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 one of the things that really very disturbed me quite a bit is the fact that much of the flooding that happened in our, in our town, in our city, was due to sinkhole issues. So I'm very pleased that this, that this ordinance that we're passing is going to put a little bit more effectiveness into our sinkhole, sinkhole health, for lack of a better word. I'm healthcare professional, so I don't really know how else to say it, but our sinkhole health, and I really, I really appreciate this, and one of the things I just, as I was thinking about this, of course, anytime you add, you add ordinances or add restrictions in, to developers, they get kind of fired up because they think it's going to, it's going to cost them more, but I really want to emphasize that this really is something that's going to protect the folks that are, are going to be buying these properties. So I think whatever cost is incurred with providing these, providing these, this ordinance is going to go into, go great lengths in protecting our inhabitants and providing a safe, a safe environment for folks, and we, one of the worst things I've seen in my time here living in Cookeville is going around the tech area and seeing folks dragging, dragging their, you know, all their, all their possessions out that have been flooded. So I, I'm just very, I'm very proud that our planning commission and Councilman Woodford have taken the time to place some, some great, some great rules on our sinkhole health.
I appreciate you saying that, and if you're ever interested, this is the study that was completed that has the detailed information for each of the two hundred and nineteen sinkholes, so it's, if you get bored, you need to go to sleep or something, anyway or not, that's a lot of great information, and that's what we need to, that's one of the basis for doing this.
I attended that meeting whenever they came and made their presentation after they did their study, and it was very interesting to find, well, a lot of the things that they had found was when some of them drain, and they never come back to the surface, but some of them may drain and then come back up to the surface someplace else, and it was really interesting, you know, what, what they were able to show us and with the study that they did, so, yeah, it, I think it was a very good study.
One thing that's not addressed in this that we've talked about, that we may at some point being explore, are the maintenance of these sinkholes, that's one of the biggest issues, is they get filled up with debris. Our regulations require that the property owners maintain those, we've had some problems with that in the past, so that's maybe something in the next few years that we'll be exploring.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, and that's one of the things I wanted to, I appreciate you saying, because the only other thing that I would like to see happen further with this is to put a little more, if we, as a city, if we could put some more teeth behind the current sinkholes we have that are being grandfathered in, this is all about new development, but for sinkholes that are already, that are already there that are being, you know, not taken care of, that are being, folks are throwing in, you know, dishwashers and refrigerators and things like that, which happens, I would like to see, if we can, if it's within our legal, legal rights as a city, to protect those sinkholes that are already there.
I think that's something we'll be studying over the next several months to see, explore what other cities do and what options we have, because as you stated, three-quarters of our city's drained by them, so it's important in coming on us to protect them.
All right, anyone else? And I'd also like to thank Tennessee Tech for doing the study.
Yes.
That was, I was actually on the planning commission when all that took place, and that, that was pretty in-depth.
They didn't do it for free.
They didn't?
Well.
We got a bargain, though.
Yeah. We worked well together, I guess. Anything else? All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item eight, consider declaring a surplus and for sale or lease of city-owned property for parcel ID fifty-three H F ten, located at the northwest intersection of Buffalo Valley Road and West Jackson Street, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the property in question is located on the map. This property is a remit of property acquired by the city in nineteen ninety-two from Sam Turner for the construction of West Jackson Street. The parcel consists of approximately three-quarters of an acre. If I can get this to flip. Here's, the survey of the properties are shown on the screen, and this property is zoned as C L local commercial. Here's an aerial view of the property. The applicable city departments have reviewed this request and have indicated that they anticipate no need for the property. The water quality control department has requested that a utility easement be retained along the entire length of the property on West Jackson Street. The planning commission has approved the surplus property declaration and for the sale or lease of the property to the highest bidder, subject to the establishment of a minimum bid amount, and with the retention of utilities at ten feet in width along the entire length of the property along West Jackson Street. The planning department recommends for declaring the property a surplus and for the sale of the property to the highest bidder with the establishment of a minimum bid price of ninety thousand dollars, subject to the retention of utilities at ten feet in width along the West Jackson Street frontage. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and address them.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, council? You request highest bidder? With a minimum bid, right? That was the request?
Yes, the original request from the property owner was for sale or lease, and we just, the city manager and I have discussed this, and we discussed it with some of y'all at the work session, that we've not done a lease in the past, and we're concerned about the legal issues, and anyway, we think it's cleaner and better, and we have always in the past sold property, and it's typically to the highest bidder. How you do that, I think's up to the council, if you want to do sealed bids or at auction, but we do recommend a minimum price of the property of ninety thousand dollars. The tax appraised value of this property from the Putnam County Tax Assessor's Office is eighty-eight thousand five hundred, and that was done in a two thousand and eleven appraisal, and we think ninety thousand dollars would be a fair value on this property.
At what point do we make the decision as to whether it's a sealed bill, bid, or an auction?
I think tonight's when you decide to.
Can I amend a motion that I?
You may.
I'd like to amend this motion by saying that we'd like to do it at auction.
I second that motion.
And the motion is that to set the value at ninety thousand?
Set, yes, I didn't change that part, just that we would do it at auction.
Do we need to set a date?
I was going to say, do we need to set an auctioneer?
Oh, we can set the date.
You could probably, you know, we could have it within sixty days, for sure, and just say within sixty days.
Of the second reading?
Well, there's no reading, this is done by minute action, so you could say within sixty days from tonight, that it'd be, we'll try to do it quicker than that, I would assume.
Does that need to be stated in my amendment? Did anybody second, oh, we've already seconded it, so we've got that amendment on there. Well, we can vote on the amendment, and then we can amend the amendment.
Well, I mean, we could just report that we'll do it in sixty days. Do they actually need to vote on the time? We could just report, we're going to try to do it in sixty days.
We can do that.
Let's save amending the motion, that one.
We don't want to get too complicated.
Please. A date to be set within the, within the.
No, they're going to set the date later.
Yeah. For the date to be set.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
First, we vote on the amendment.
On the amendment, to open it to a, an auction. All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, anything on the amended motion? All right, now we vote on the motion as amended. Call vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a change order on the water plant upgrade and expansion project, sponsors Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm here seeking authorization for the city manager to execute a change order on the water plant upgrade and expansion project. There are several revisions that need to be addressed to assure a viable long-term project down there. We have, we have found a couple of ways to reduce the cost on the increases that we're asking you to approve. The original construction contract price totaled six million nine hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. The proposed change order increases the construction cost by forty-four thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars, or approximately zero point six four percent. With approximately fifty percent complete, we believe the proposed changes are well within the project and the scope of the project, and are very happy with it so far. Mr. Shipley pointed out a good analogy, if you built a hundred thousand dollar house, and this turns out to be about a six hundred and thirty-seven dollar change in that project, which I felt like was a good, a good way to frame it. And I'll show you what we, what we're doing. Here's the original project, the way it was, where we started, here's what we planned to do, do the clear well pump room, electrical room operations, here's where they started, just a couple of pictures, I don't have many. This is going to be the, out where the electrical room is, pump rooms. This is the rendering of the. This is the rendering of the operations building over here on the left. Here's how it looked when we started. Here's where we are. I think we got one more picture there where we are today. And here's the scope of the change orders. I can go through those. Mr. Woodford, Councilman Woodford and Councilman Albright have driven down there with me and looked at it, so I can do that, or y'all can just give me some questions, but we'd recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Mr. Kelly, with as many pictures as you usually show us about your projects, I can only imagine how many pictures you have of your children.
Got a bunch of them.
But we appreciate it.
I've got to organize them, too.
Any questions, comments?
I just appreciate our councilmembers, Councilmember Albright and Mr. Woodford going down there and checking this out for us. I didn't have, I didn't have the chance to do that, and I really appreciate you guys scrutinizing that. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly was kind enough to take me down there, and what was it, Jeff and Roger?
Jeff. Jeff and Jason.
Jason, Jeff and Jason. Kind enough to walk around. It's quite extensive what they're doing down there, and it's, I think it's quite remarkable on the size of a project like this, that the work order change is as small as it is. They did a lot of preparation and organized thoughts going into this, so I commend them highly on the work that the Water Department has done and the engineering firm that they are on the same page, that it's just little minor things, that when you're down there and see the scope of it, it, the changes, you know, are per needed, and they're very minor, so it's, it's well worth the change. I mean, they've done a good job in planning this.
One of the first things I did when I was elected to council was spend an afternoon with Mr. Kelly going through all the water plant. Every time I get myself a glass of water, I'm very appreciative of it. We do everything we can to make sure that we have good water supply and that it goes where it's supposed to go when you're through with it.
I think it's because of our sinkhole health.
I think so, too.
But I think it's interesting that a lot of these changes are due to changes in technology.
Technology, yeah.
That have, you know, you, after 24 hours, why things change, but it, a lot of these are being updated, and then some of the security reasons, too, and, and it's very interesting whenever you're out there and you can see exactly what, what they're doing and why they're doing it, and it's very interesting, and, of course, I, Roger and Bill were there whenever I was here with Ronnie, so, and they're all very enthusiastic about the, the project itself, and it's just, it's a good group of people out there. We really appreciate it.
Very good employees, very dedicated.
Very good group of employees.
And Mr., just for the, I mean, what are you laughing at? For the health, for the water health of our community? I mean, now, how, what's the, the plant that we, we're in right now has, has made, has provided clean water for Cookeville citizens for how long, Ronnie?
Are you saying the current plant?
Yeah, the current plant.
It was built there in 1970.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's put its time in, and this revision, this, this expansion that we're doing is, 30 year, 40 years is fantastic, and this is, this is money well spent. And for those folks that, I was just talking to Councilman, you know, Connie over here, and asked her if she grew up on well water. I mean, waters, and Alma, thank you very much for that comment about it. Water's a big deal, and I, I, I just really appreciate that this is going to, hopefully is going to last another 40 years.
Yes, it, and it's like I said, I've told you before, it's sort of a, think about the third phase of, and we'll have one more phase eventually when we grow to that point, but we're, we'll sort of be set up and ready for that next step when that comes.
And another good thing about this is when they, these steps come along, Mr. Kelly's department just writes a check, so we don't have to go in debt. It's paid for as we go along, so that's, that's a wonderful thing, to be able to be debt-free on this.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing none? All vote?
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, this is a portion of our program where we like to open the floor to anyone that would like to come forward and speak on anything. We just ask that you keep it to three minutes, if possible.
Yes, sir. Just, can I just ask a quick question on item number seven? What is the buffer zone? I guess what's, how far from the sinkhole does a buffer have to be?
The buffer is determined by the engineer doing the analysis of the property, so that can vary from site to site. It depends on the characteristics of the sinkhole, how much water volume, drainage goes into that area, so it varies from site to site, and we'll be depending upon the developer's engineers to tell us that. That answer?
Does that help?
Mr. Mills, when you were talking about the sinkhole, you said the throat of the sinkhole, is that the opening of the sinkhole?
Yeah, and every sinkhole's different.
Yeah.
Some you won't be able to find the opening, some have multiple openings.
Okay.
Some, some it just percolates through, and that's why, when I said karst geological features, that's what the geologist or the engineer would tell us. How does it work? What needs to be protected to make sure it's going to be able to drain properly? What needs to happen if we do allow development in that vicinity? What needs to be protected to keep it from, to maintain its storage capacity? Each sinkhole has a storage capacity based on the drainage basin, and, you know, if you fill that up, that water's going somewhere else, and typically that leads to flooding. But that's what we would require the developer to provide us through a qualified professional.
I was just wondering, because I just taught the mouth of the river to my students. So now I know the throat of the sinkhole.
Just a little FYI here, I have a sinkhole in my front yard. I have a sinkhole in my front yard, and I had to do a lot of the, I had to do a lot of the things that, that Mr. Mills is talking about, and you can't tell that there's a sinkhole in my front yard. There was a lot of engineering science went into, went into that, and it's covered up with dirt, and it's got a lot of pretty grass on it, because it's always gets lots, it gets lots of water, but you can't, you can't tell anything's there. But I have, I have a definite, a definite sinkhole that drains from three subdivisions and goes right by my front yard, so it's a, it's a fascinating science, and it, but there's huge variation, so having professionals looking at this and making sure that the, the sinkholes are engineered in such a way that they continue to drain is going to be a terrific asset to Cookeville, so I just want to let people know that I have a sinkhole in my front yard.
I don't know if I would have told them.
And it worked, and it works. No, it's engineered, just perfect.
You're not planning on selling it.
Not planning on selling it.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir.
What if the sinkhole has over the years been filled with rubbish, garbage?
Is that grandfathered in, or what?
I don't think it is yet. Or is it?
By code, it's up to the property owner to keep, to maintain the health of the, the sinkhole. That's very difficult to, to monitor, but, you know, it's, especially if the, the property owner lives or has a business there, it would behoove them to do that, because they're just creating their own problem if they fill the thing in and it floods their property. But that's a big issue, you know. I remember growing up, my grandmother had a big sinkhole, and that's where they put all their trash. That's where they took it and dumped it. Not many times I took it out there. Didn't know any better, now we know better.
Yeah.
It's your water table.
Does that help, Mr. Grimes?
Anyone else?
I'd like to thank the city employees and department heads, Linda, Chief Terry, Roger, different people in the city that worked with the Blue Cross well last weekend. There was a lot of volunteer, extra hours put in, and went very smoothly. It represents Cookeville well. People, you know, the TWSA, you know, has awarded us, is it four more years? So, you know, this is great for Cookeville. Cookeville's being associated with the championship football. In case you're not footballed out with high school football, there is another football game out there this weekend. It's the All-Stars, it's the East versus West. I believe it starts at 1 o'clock Saturday out at Tech, so you get to see the best of the best of the high school football players out at Tech this weekend on Saturday.
Anything else? The Christmas parade was Monday night, and we, we lit the Christmas tree, so I guess this is the official start of the holiday season, so keep that in mind, and help someone out if you can, or at least a, a warm smile sometimes can go a long way.
And spend your money in Cookeville, Tennessee.
Yes, please.
Shop locally.
Yes. All right, this meeting's adjourned.